Hi, Sean, do you want to do just a quick check? Just realizing that we already have some guests viewing. Just want to do a quick sound check.
Okay.
All right, I hear ya.
Good.
Hi, Paulette, if you can hear me, do you want to go ahead and do a quick sound check? Realizing there are other people already joining the meeting.
Hi, Amy.
Great, sound great. Paulette, your camera is a little low, so I just see your mouth.
Okay.
There we go.
Boot down.
Thank.
Lower my chair, how about that?
There we go. Paulette, do you know where I could find the text for like our mission statement that we usually read at the beginning?
Let me see if I can.
That is one thing I just realized I don't have. Nora, are you able to talk right now?
Hey, there we go, hi.
Okay, I have been promoting you to panelist. Have you, is it asking you to rejoin the webinar as a panelist?
It is not. No. But I can talk now, but the video isn't showing. Hey.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Got Mr. Miller, we've got Sarah.
Thanks for the new computer.
Yeah. And just for a reminder, everyone has wonderful audio. We do have some friends out of already joined us from public. So I just want to make everyone aware of that.
Amy, I put the mission statement in the chat box.
Okay, I will.
It's on our website, too.
Okay.
Do you want me to pull you, do you want me to send you a link?
I have an image of a flag, so I'll probably just put it on that document.
Hi, Bee.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, so we're just all remembering that we do have some public that have already joined us. And now I'm going to go ahead and go live on YouTube, so I can send Mr. Sodder's link.
Amy, I see Jan McGinnis is in there as an attendee.
Okay, yep, I'm going live really quick, and then Jan, I will jump on there and switch you over. Okay, I've got Dr. Shute promoted. And I'm looking for Jan, first Lisa. There she is. Sarah, do you want to do a quick sound check while we are still getting set up here? Remembering that there are some other folks that have already joined us.
Sure, hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Mr. Miller, can you too, or Ms. Dr. Shute?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me just fine?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Jan, I'm trying with yours, are you getting anything, Jan?
I see her, but she's muted.
Okay. That's applause, at least we see her.
There we.
There, I just unmuted her. I tried.
You unmuted me, but don't you want me muted except when I'm supposed to speak?
Yeah, we just wanted you to do a quick test, so we knew that it worked, so perfect. You can mute yourself back if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to check if Adam got the. Okay, let me just double check the Facebook Live link, and then I will start sharing my screen for the YouTube Live link.
I don't see Lisa.
You jump over. We've got Bob, wants to panelist. I haven't seen Karina yet either. Here we go. Still looking here. I think Lisa is in here, yep, Lisa's there. Lisa, can you show your video, so we know we can see you? Oh, yep, there she is. And then, so we're still waiting on Karina. Okay, and just so you all know, we are now YouTube Live, so I'm going to go ahead and share. Oh, I found that.
Thanks, Amy.
Yep. Oh, found Karina. Karina, did you make it in? Can you go ahead and say a few things, so we can hear that you're.
Made it in.
Okay, sounds good. So Adam, I'm going to go ahead and mute. Do you want to text me if you see anyone else who comes up as an attendee that should be a panelist?
Yeah, how do I, do I just view the participants?
Yeah, just the participants, and I think I got everybody, but I just, I'm going to take that back down, so that we can get started.
Okay, we should have a few people that join us for recognitions. So I'll watch for those names.
Okay. So with that being, I think we're ready to go.
Okay. I'd like to call the April 6th board meeting to order. This is the time, and we're in many different places, to begin our meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us on our live YouTube broadcast. And welcome to those of you who will be watching us on a recorded delayed broadcast. Each of our board members, as well as Board Secretary and Superintendent, you can see labeled in when they speak. We will be able to have public comments as dictated in the information that was given in logging in for this board meeting. Please read with me the mission statement for the school district. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." And now, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, the only addition that I'm aware of was, we did add a letter that had been submitted to the district from Garland Construction relative to the tennis court contract and a response to that letter. It is not part of the contract, it's just something that Garland wanted us to be aware of.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Untied, so moved.
McGinnis seconded.
Thank you. We're going to try our all in favor, and if we have any nays, then we'll seek those out, but we're going to try and facilitate a little faster than doing roll call for each of these. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero. Mr. Sodders?
So, we had, first, we had a couple of great student and family outreach efforts done at various buildings in our district. I know all of our staff are working very hard in that arena here recently. Some especially impressive efforts were at Woodbury and at Hoagland and at Fisher, all three being elementary schools. And I've invited, I know, it looks like Hillary Klein from Fisher and Sarah Murphy from Woodbury are both for sure in this meeting. And all, if I could, I'll let them speak briefly about the short video messages that they built for their families.
Okay, so Emily Klein?
Hillary, Hillary Klein.
Hillary Klein, sorry. I'm Hillary.
And Sarah Murphy is the other person.
Okay, Hillary. Hillary, can you hear us? So, and then Sarah Murphy. She keeps jumping around on me, sorry, just a second. Allowed to talk. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so Sarah can go ahead and talk. I'm not sure if we can get Hillary going, it says she's using an older version. But she could always post in chat, and we could read her comments as well. Okay, Sarah, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm the PE teacher at Woodbury, and when we were all coming together, when we came back after spring break, we were kind of brainstorming different ways that we could still kind of reach out to our students every day and let them know that we're thinking of them, and also to provide them with some things to do at home. And so we came up with the Woodbury Daily Adventures. And on that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we were able, our staff really collaborated, and we were able to film, I think, like 35 different activities, whether that be crafts, or games, or jokes, or different physical activities they could do. And then I think we also recorded like 20 or 25 stories that we posted privately to the kids on our Google Classroom. And so it really was a cool way for our staff to come together and provide something for our students that could just let them know what we were thinking of every day. So it was a cool thing to be involved in.
Thank you, Sarah, for including our students and families, even though they're afar, as are the board members today.
If I could add to that, too, I really do appreciate Mr. Del Valle of Woodbury teaching me how to salsa.
So, thank you for that. So, the second recognition we have tonight, and thank you, Sarah, for sharing some information about Woodbury Daily, Woodbury Daily Adventures. And thanks again to you and Hannah and Hillary for your, your extra effort that you guys in your buildings are putting in. Going to the National Assistant Principals Week, that is this week, April 6th through 10th. And Marshalltown School District, we appreciate our four Associate Principals at Marshalltown High School, Lenahan Intermediate School, and Miller Middle School. They all do a great job, and they're crucial, they're crucial people to each of those buildings and to our district as a whole. So we just wanted to recognize them for their work.
And Adam, I do see that Hillary sent us a message, and she said she is one of the kindergarten teachers at Fisher, and her mom actually gave her the idea, because her school was making a video to send it out.
All right, thank you, Hillary. I think that is it for recognitions.
Thank you. As we move on to our public hearings, I'm assuming that some of the people online are ready to speak. I will open the public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget amendment. Do we have anyone to speak to that? Then I close the public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget amendment. And I open the public hearing on the proposed 2020-2021 school year budget. Is there anyone to speak to that?
Bee, I received no written comments pertaining to either one of those either.
Okay. Hearing none, and knowing what Paulette has just shared, I will close the public hearing on the proposed 2020-2021 school year budget. Moving on to the consent agenda. Looking at the minutes of March 16th, are there any additions or corrections? Minutes of March 18th, special board meeting? Or the minutes of the March 24th, special board meeting? Moving on to personnel, are there any items of note, Nora?
No.
Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts. We have the letter that Dr. Shute referred to. We have a revised agreement with Speaker Mark Purnit, present on August 20th and 21st of 2020. We have a letter to the Federal Communications Commission to make e-rate funds available to equip students with home internet access. We have a proposal from Support Ed Online to facilitate online professional development. And we have a memorandum of understanding with the Marshalltown Y to use Fisher Elementary for our community daycare and wellness services. And we have one Level Two Special Education student enrolled out. Are there any questions on those agreements and contracts? Looking at open enrollments, we have two individuals out for the rest of this school year. Are there any items of note, Paulette, in bills?
No.
We have some gifts and grants. We have a grant approval in the amount of $1,550 on behalf of STEP and the Community Education Foundation of Marshall County. And we have an award from the EPA for 2019 diesel emission reduction in the amount of $40,000. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Do we have any? Do we have any person in the audience wishing to speak during public comments? Did you receive any requests, Paulette?
I did receive one email last Friday afternoon and the subject of the email said board meeting. So I'm assuming that this was something that she wanted to speak to during the public comment section. The person that submitted it, her name is Brenda Streets. And the email says, would like some questions answered, as many senior parents do. One, will they need to go to school longer? Two, will there be a graduation ceremony? And three, can we still celebrate with a party for them? Thank you for your time. I know that you, we can't comment during this public comment section of the meeting, but I am aware that Dr. Schutte did respond to her personally.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would wish to speak at this time? Okay, we'll move on to the education section of the meeting. The coronavirus pandemic resolution, Dr. Ryan.
Hi, I know it's pretty customary for us to read.
Did we lose Nora?
Yes.
Nora, we can't hear you.
And she probably can't.
I'll, I'll run over there and tell her.
We can't hear you.
Hello?
Hello, now we can hear you.
I'm muted.
We couldn't hear what you were saying.
I'm unmuted.
Love technology.
Okay, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what's going on over there. I'm not muted. But anyway, as is customary, well, normally we would read a resolution, but this is a full six pages. So I'm going to refrain from making you suffer through that. So I'm just going to quickly summarize this six-page document that was mostly developed by allers, or the legal team that we use there in Des Moines. This is a, it's basically a supplemental resolution to what we had prior under the last board meeting. So this is discussing, you know, some, a quick summary of what COVID-19 is to date, what we, we are aware of, what it is to date. I know that that information is developing. It speaks to the emergency paid leave that came from the FFCRA, the Families First Corona Response Act. And this is information that we've shared with all of our staff, but again, it's, it puts it in one location. So it speaks to additional paid leave that is available for some individuals. It also speaks to the expansion of the FMLA federal regulations and what does that mean? How do you get compensated? Do I get paid fully? Do I only get two-thirds of my pay? It speaks to that. And it also speaks to some information for individuals on our, in our buildings, for example, the illness reporting. So for example, you're not allowed to report here if you have a fever over a hundred, if you're coughing, if you're sneezing. Information like that for our employees is, is within this resolution. It speaks to what do you do if you're a high-risk employee? And then it also links to some CDC guidance. And then something that may, that is new especially is it speaks to nonessential travel out of the state. So in this document, it speaks to if you are going to choose to travel out of state, you need to inform your immediate supervisor of those intentions and your plans. And then you are going to be required to do a fourteen-day quarantine. And for that, you'll need to use your personal time vacation or sick leave. That is that nonessential travel out of the state doesn't qualify for the other types of leaves, but you are still, you know, able to travel, but you need to inform us of that and you need to understand that you will not be allowed to come to work for those fourteen days. And then it just reinforces, you know, that we are in compliance with the federal regulations at this time and then the state regulations as far as needing sizes and things like that. So this is just a document that's not really a policy, but it's a resolution letting our, our people know that we're complying with those regulations and also that we're further enforcing some restrictions on some things. So hopefully it's a nice one document for individuals to reference.
Are there any questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the COVID-19 pandemic resolution as presented?
Okay, McGinnis seconded.
Okay, untied, McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? The motion carries seven zero. Dr. Ryan?
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is pertains to Power School. And I want to be very respectful of the time, so I'm going to go briefly here, but I welcome any questions you may have throughout. So very briefly, what I want to talk to is about Power School. And it's a solution that has two, or it's a platform really that has two solutions that I would like to purchase for the district, applicant tracking and HR records. And I'm going to very briefly speak to how purchasing these can really improve our efficiency and bring us and HR into the 21st century. You know, one of the main goals of HR is to really attract and retain excellent talent. And I think that we are hindered in that given, given our current resources. And so I'm going to explain briefly what, what that means. So our current hiring protocol, protocol currently right now is that all positions are posted on teach Iowa.gov, every single position that's open in the district. And, and the administrator or the supervisor looks through those applicants online. And then they narrow down the field from those who have applied. And they look at, you know, who, who they are interested in screening through HumanX. So then there's a HumanX screening process and then finally there's an in-person interview process. Once the administrator, the supervisor decides who they would like to recommend to hire, a document comes to me and HR and I look through the, look through the applications and the recommendations and everything like that. And once I sign off on that, I begin the process of moving that individual from applicant to employee and that begins with a background check. And then from here, once I have approved the applicant to move forward to an employee, all documentation and all onboarding materials are done on paper, on hard copy. That is a current process and let me just kind of explain some of the issues that have, that follow, that I guess accompany the process that we have currently. We cannot currently customize any applications on Teach Iowa or the directions. So for example, if you're applying to be a substitute custodian or you're applying to be the superintendent of our school, you are having the same application. And I don't have the data to show this, but I've heard anecdotally that people will just drop out of the application process. They'll say, you know, I'm applying to be a substitute food service employee and that's all of a sudden asking for my teaching license. I don't think I'm doing this right. I'm just going to get out and I'm confused and I don't, I'm maybe embarrassed to call because I don't want that, that to be the first impression is that I can't use a computer. So you know what? I'm just, I'm done. We also can't customize directions. So for example, I will not approve any applicant or approve a hire unless I've heard from one of the previous supervisors. So what I'd like to do is put, you know, when you have to enter your references, I would like to put in parentheses or somewhere note that one must be a supervisor, a previous supervisor. I can't even put, I can't customize the directions even. So the application and the directions are the same across all applications. The individual hiring doesn't have a really, an easy way to sort or customize how they're going to compare the applicants. So let's say we're looking at a teaching pool and I'm Principal A and I'm most interested in years of experience. And my colleague, Principal B, is most interested in GPA. We don't have an easy way to kind of put the applicant side by side and compare them based on the criteria that we're most interested in. It's kind of an antiquated way. You've got to look at the whole application. You can't really customize even the way that you're looking at the applicants. Nothing is digitized at all, whether that, I mean, the application is, I should state. But after that, nothing is digitized. So all the paperwork is on hard copy. But that also is for our current employees. So if you want to change your address, it's a form. If you want to change your direct deposit information, it's a form. Your W four withholding, all of these things are done hard copy. And so that usually entails someone having to email me, I loop in my assistant and they coordinate. The individual prints off the record, fills it out and then scans it and then we print it off. So it's a lot of paper, too, that we're using and it's just really integrated for 2021. And then it's just arduous for the applicants as they're applying, but then also, you know, they're awaiting approval. There's this back and forth with school mail for the administrators who are trying to fill those positions. And then also for our current employees, as I was explaining our, how we are, nothing is digitized here. It's especially as I speak to my peers across Iowa, it's pretty rare that we are not digitized, at least in some sense. And we are not in any sense. So Power School is a platform that integrates with a lot of the other solutions that we use. So Teach Iowa, it integrates with HumanX, it integrates with our payroll software and our Kronos for our timekeeping and our AESOP for our time and attendance. It integrates with a lot of these. So while it'd be another, another platform that we're adding, they can all speak to each other nicely. So for example, if I want to compare HumanX scores, I can bring in all the data from HumanX and look at my applicants. There are two solutions that I'd really like to purchase, I think would be great for the district. The first is applicant tracking. That is the entire application process. It's customized, it's digital, it's user-friendly. We can have a million different applications if we'd like. We can customize all the directions. You can compare and sort applicants easy, schedule interviews. You can do the screenings right through the platform. A lot of those bringing us into the 21st century, as I said. The other solution that I think we should purchase would be the records and that's to bridge that gap from applicant to employee. So I can take everything from the applicant and move it all into our records because everything would be digitized. So they don't have to redo a lot of the paperwork. It just pulls right from their application. Every, all forms would be digital. We can create and customize documents and track electronically. As an employee, I can go in and change my address. I don't even need to reach out to HR. You know, a lot of these can be done. And then, you know, you can customize workflows for the documents. So if somebody changes their W four, we can send it to the business office and they have to approve it, too. So it's just, there's a workflow there. We can send reminders and file forms automatically. This will save us a lot of time. Most, most districts our size have an HR staff of about four and a half. I have two. And so, you know, when we are not at a time when we can add staff, this would really help make us more efficient and save a lot of time without adding another individual at this time. So the last thing I want to say is, you know, why now? We, we need to get into the 21st century. I think it, it doesn't reflect well to the applicants. When everything is so antiquated as well, they want to be teaching or working at whatever position they have somewhere that is with the times and we are sadly not there. We want to be green and this is all paperless. We just, the bottom line is we need a more efficient and effective way to hire and onboard people, to attract that talent, to keep them here and to save time and money from the HR side. We just, we need that and Power School would provide that. Like I mentioned, it would save time from our, our HR side answering questions. You know, emailing people reminders to fill out the forms, all of that is done electronically. Tracking progress and all of this saving time so that we can focus on other important things that aren't receiving enough attention now because we're having to do these other menial tasks. It also saves administrators' time sorting through applicants, scheduling screenings, filling out hard copy, all of these things. It would save time, again, going back to that being more efficient, efficient and effective. And then faster turnaround time for approval and hire. And once, you know, once that individual knows who they want to hire, we can really get them moved through the process at a faster rate, which would be great. The cost is eighteen thousand dollars total. That's including both of the solutions. And then there is a one-time setup cost of about eight thousand dollars where the individuals, the people from Power School would come and help us integrate all of our, our forms. So existing employees, for example, we'd get them all uploaded. And they can show us and teach the administrators how to, how to work the system and things like that. So the ongoing cost would be about eighteen thousand dollars a year. And I was really pleased with that cost, especially since the timing couldn't have been better. The day that, or the, when they gave us their price quote, literally the next week, they redid all their prices and increased the price. But they are letting us lock in at that if, if approved at the next board meeting, they're going to let us lock in at that old price and we'd be, we'd be set there. We wouldn't have to increase next year. For example, we would get to be set at that, at the older costs. So that is what I'm asking of you. I think if, you know, we need to continue to move forward and I think this is a great way to do that, especially when you, when you look at other districts. We just were pretty antiquated and I'd like to change that. And this, I welcome any questions you may have and then this would be up for further discussion and vote next board meeting. What questions do you have?
Does human resources have a budget to pay for this?
I, Paulette did not have a concern given the price tag for this type of platform. So yes. There weren't any major concerns with adding this to our budget.
How many employees do we have?
We have about a thousand. That includes subs as well. It's, I think, Paulette can speak to this, but I believe it's about nine hundred consistently are paid every month.
Okay, so we're really talking eighteen to twenty dollars an employee. That's really a very reasonable cost for an ongoing cost, I would think.
And I, I think it's also, the biggest thing that I'm, I'm excited if, if we were to move forward with this is how much time that leaves open for me and also my assistant to focus on those other things that I feel that we should be focusing on. This will free up a lot of our time and resources. So it's not only, yes, bring us to the 21st century, going green, but it's, it's expanding our capacity as a team, I feel.
Well, as someone who has worked with administrators coming in from other states that have tried to work with Iowa and as someone who has used Teach Iowa, it is an antiquated and cumbersome system. So anything you can do to make it more user-friendly and better for administrators is probably something we should do.
And I will quickly state that I did preview this with the administrative team and there was a lot of positive feedback. I didn't hear any negative feedback. So they were also excited about this.
Other questions or comments?
If this were to get approved, how fast can we get it going?
Within weeks. Once approved, it's really, well, I should preface that with it's going to depend on COVID-19. They usually will spend three to four days with us here onsite, so it's really going to be scheduling that time. But even with them at a distance, I think we could start rolling out some of this within weeks.
So they would train in person for administrators?
Yep, three to four days they would spend onsite. Most of that time would be with me and my staff. But then, yes, they would also hold sessions for administrators and other supervisors who would have access to the system.
And this will be on the agenda at the next board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to keep, keep.
Keep rolling.
Here I go. Okay, the next five items on the agenda are the master contracts that have been ratified by each bargaining unit. So first we have the Marshalltown Education Association, the MEA for certified staff. I will open that, well, the contract itself is good for two years. So this year up for negotiation was only wages. And what was agreed to was a two hundred and fifty dollar addition to the base of the salary schedule. So the contract language doesn't really change. The only thing that's new would be this brand-new salary schedule. It's not, nothing works for, oh, there it goes. Okay, so two hundred and fifty, so we have to remember that it's indexed. So it's not two hundred and fifty dollars to everybody's, every certified teacher's paycheck, it's indexed. So for example, if you look at this BA five, which this is where if you have a bachelor's degree and fewer than five years of teaching experience, you'll be placed on this BA five level, an incoming teacher, for example. This year that, that number is forty-three, one seventy-three. Adding two hundred and fifty dollars to the base makes this forty-three, eight-two-eight. So it's, again, it's not an even two fifty to everybody. It's more than two hundred and fifty dollars per state. So it's again, it's not an even 250 to everybody. It's more than $250 per step because it's indexed. So this is in front of you is the combined salary schedule that would be effective for next school year. And then also, sorry, I hope you're not getting motion sickness here. Also is the supplemental pay schedule. So for the other activities and things like that, the salary for those activities. So again, that was ratified over, I think it was over 95% of their members said yes.
Do you want to go over the percent cost increase and the total cost, please?
Sure. So this equates to a 2.46 cost increase and that includes FICA and I PERS for a total cost, cost increase to the district of almost $661,000. And that's, this was again, a one-year agreement for wages. It's a one-year agreement. Well, next year, actually, the entire contract will be up for negotiation.
Any questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 M E A master contract as presented?
Second.
Heitman Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries seven zero. Buildings and grounds?
Thank you. Next, yes, we have the buildings and grounds. The district and the union agreed to step advancement longevity and then a 10 cents per hour to the wage of each employee. And then also an additional 10 cents, the existing wage of the three transportation mechanics that we have, or any transportation mechanic classification. So 10 cents to every employee and then an additional 10 cents to the transportation mechanics. This is right under a two and a half percent cost increase. This is about $54,000 cost increase to the district. And then just some quick minor changes for titles. For example, Director of Finance was changed to Director of Business Operations. And then again, a one-year agreement. I changed just the formatting and the look so that you can search these easier and they're hyperlinked to the certain areas you want to jump to the contract. The actual language contained really didn't change at all, except what was noted there with the title change. So almost all of this text that you're seeing on the screen is the same. And then again, I just reformatted. So it looked a little bit better in my opinion. And then this is the salary schedule that changed with the, with the 10 cents added.
Questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Building and Grounds Master Contract as Presented?
So moved to Unteed.
Seconded McGinnis.
Thank you, Unteed and McGinnis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries seven zero. Nutrition Professionals.
All right. Step advancement longevity and then 20 cents per hour to the wage of each employee was negotiated and agreed upon for a year. This is about a 2.29% increase for about $21,000. So when I open this contract here, besides the formatting, the only thing that changed is that salary schedule at the end, which reflects that 20 cent increase.
Questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Nutrition Professionals Master Contract as Presented?
So move Unteed.
Unteed, was it Faltus?
Duh. Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries seven zero. Paraeducators.
Okay. Step advancement only for this group this year, a one-year agreement, several changes to titles. So for example, Associate Superintendent was replaced with Superintendent. There was a wrong acronym. It said ACS, but really it should be ASC. And then I'm going to open the document so that you can see, well, before I say that, this, the, so for step advancement for this group, it's a 3.3% 3.36% cost increase of about $91,000 total. And I'm going to move to the end of the document to show you and here's some changes. So the library paraeducators were moved from, there was a lane one kind of where my mouse is, there was that lane one and we moved the library paraeducators into lane two. So lane two here is special education, preschool, library and health aides. That is in lane two and we removed any reference to which level of special education. We don't want to be calling out which level, which student at which level for privacy reasons. So there were just, it just became special education instead of the specific levels. And then library apparel was moved into this second salary lane.
Questions for Dr. Ryan? And there was no increase. It was just a step advancement. Is that correct?
Correct. There are some, some individuals receive up to a 7% increase when they change, when they move up a step and some it's two and a half, some it's five. So within the steps, there are differential, differential step increases. So everybody moved up a step so long as they started before January 1st. And so their individual increase varied, but for everybody just to move up that cost increase was that 336.
Other questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Paraeducator Master Contract as Presented?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I've got her Hernandez. Anybody else?
I can second it. McGinnis.
Thank you. Hernandez, McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries seven zero.
Right. And the final contract is for the transportation, the bus drivers, the bus monitors. Step advancement and then nine cents per hour wage increase to each driver and each monitor. This is about a 2.49% cost increase. It's about $20,000 for the district. There was a memorandum of understanding in last year's contract and we just moved that into the actual contract. So that M O U that was effective the entire year is now actually part of the contract and that spoke to activity rate of pay. The, the actual, the hourly rate of the bus monitors was in the employee handbook and I pulled that out and put that in the contract since they, you know, we wanted wages in the contracts. So that is now part of the contract, the bus monitor wages. And then a one-year agreement was agreed to, just like the other ones. So the bulk of the contract language did not change. Again, we're speaking to mainly the salary schedule and the fact that the bus monitor wage is now part of the contract and not the employee handbook.
Questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Transportation Master Contract as Presented?
So moved. Heitman.
Heitman Faltus, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a general comment that with both our Marshalltown Education Association as well as our respective support staff unions, I'm just very appreciative about the willingness to come together and to get these contracts resolved in a very quick fashion and I think mutually beneficial fashion during these difficult times.
Okay. Mr. Gosling, are you around?
Is Eric on?
He was. I just promoted him to panelist. So he should.
He looks like he's on, but muted.
Muted.
Do you hear me now, Amy?
I can hear you. I know. I don't know what's going on over there. Okay. And Eric is unmuted and I just asked him to turn his video on.
There we go.
Am I good?
You're good.
All right. Thank you. So this is the handbook conversation. First, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So there were not a lot of changes from the 2019 handbook to the 2020 handbook. Some minor changes on page one, the updated equity statement indicated different contact information. There's updates on page five of the handbook. Staff names, some of those staff names are in red. Those are individuals who have indicated that there's a potential likelihood they will not be back next year. Board member names, dates and term dates were updated. Also on page five. On page seven, I updated the 11th grade math path, or I'm sorry, the 11th grade language arts path language to reflect the fact that there's going to be three different options potentially at 11th grade at the language arts level for juniors. So new language was inserted. That probably strengthens our notification to the rights of students who may be considered homeless. The saturation level of students at MLA that's homeless is pretty significant. About 10% of our students this year met the federal definition of homeless under the McKinney-Vento Act. So I wanted to make sure that there's language in our handbook that lets those folks know what their, what their rights are under the law. My suspicion is you'll see that particular language show up in other buildings' handbooks as well this year. So that's a new section. The other section that is kind of new, but it's actually been pulled out and enhanced is some language on videotaping and photography restrictions. We've had some problems in our building with kids using phones with cameras in places where they shouldn't. They're not necessarily violating the law, but they're making other students uncomfortable or those devices have become a distraction to our primary mission. And so I wanted to give some additional emphasis to that language. I've pulled it out of another part of our handbook and this language also reflects the same language that Marshalltown High School uses as well. On page 25, I didn't highlight them, but another minor change is I updated the dates for the open enrollment deadlines per required notification of our students and families. So that is the bulk of the handbook changes for this year.
Questions for Eric?
I appreciate that videotaping and photography restrictions because I have seen it as a problem for parents or even for students and it's causing conflict within students. So that's nice that that was included.
Thank you.
I agree.
And the handbook will come back with the others for approval at a later time. So if, as you read it, you have questions, you still have time to clarify those with Eric. Thank you.
Okay. I believe the next item is mine as well. Ordinarily, we would wait to present graduates to the board at the same time that the high school does. Given our personalized learning structure, we have, since the semester has ended, six, six additional students that have been verified to meet graduation requirements. Sort of the timeliness of this has to do with a letter that the district has received from the Department of Defense asking that seniors that have graduated, that may be matriculating to the military, they would like to move up their shift times for enlisted individuals. And two of the individuals that have graduated on this list of six have enlisted in the armed forces and that's one of the reasons I'm presenting this slate of candidates for graduation to the board.
And Eric, just for clarification, one of these names has already been before the board at semester, correct?
Right. Hunter Diggins was at the, was in front of the board. He was on the first semester list and he was a first semester graduate. The document that we sent over, it is just sort of a cumulative document and I, I probably should have pulled him out, but anyway, there's seven total names and six additional names for the board.
Questions for Eric? May I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 first semester graduates for MLA as presented?
I moved Unteed.
Seconded McGinnis.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stevenson? And Mr. Kretzinger?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight you're going to hear from me more than Matt because we have split this into two pieces. So multi-tiered systems of supports exist in Marshalltown schools from an academic standpoint as well as a social emotional learning standpoint. So this slideshow you'll see again on the 20th and Matt will add some more detail into the social emotional part. But for tonight, I wanted to talk to you about the academic piece. So back in February, I gave my first update to the board about our strategic action plan. And that was related to our goal area that was focused on professional learning and professional development. And I shared information with you. And then I was asked to share at this meeting an update on another strategic action goal we have related to multi-tiered system of supports and we call that MTSS as well as the State Department and the Federal Department. A long time ago, when this came to, to be, you might have heard the term RTI if you were in the system a long time ago, which stood for response to intervention. So you might not know what MTSS is and I wanted to share with you that this is a very important focus of the Iowa Department of Education on their website. You can click onto that link there and it spells out for you what is, what's important if you have this rolling in your school district or system, what five components should you see evidence of? And we have all of these things in place in Marshalltown and are building them up through the PK 12 system over time. So we do have evidence based curriculum in all areas, core and non-core that are provided universally to every student. We're screening all students. That's another word for assessment. We're assessing them with screeners multiple times a year academically in the areas of reading and math, for example. We also have intervention periods built into each school's day where students who maybe fall into a targeted or intensive level because they're not meeting the standards that the screener is screening for, can get extra small group assistance. And our school board has actually seen that in action. For example, when we visited Lenahan during the winter, I think that was in January or February. Another hallmark of an effective MTSS system is that we have progress, progress monitoring in place. So that means on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, students are being, having little checks, so to speak, of how they're, how they're performing and if how they're performing, and if they're responding to the intervention we've given them. And then we have a school system or grade levels and teams who use that data to make decisions about what to do for each individual child. And as I said earlier, this is, has been embedded in our strategic action plan for at least the last four years. It's nestled under Goal One, which is related to student achievement. So we really do believe that in order to get all of our students to have the highest levels of achievement, we're going to have to dig in and have a strong MTSS system as our foundation. I oversee that work, and a metric, or some metrics of success that would help us know how our, how well we're meeting that action plan goal is by looking at our system's common formative assessments. Those are usually teacher-developed, sometimes they exist within curriculums, that curricula that we buy. Also, having layers and systems put in place across grade levels and departments to use those assessments to help us plan our instruction and adjust as needed. And that's the work that you will hear heavily, our professional learning communities involved in on a weekly or six-day cycle basis. So as I said before, that's MTSS in a nutshell, and then depending on what group of people you're talking with, they might say, oh yeah, that's academic, or they might say, oh, that's social-emotional. So here, you're going to see academic literacy, in particular, and academic math. And the reason why I chose to focus on those two areas in this presentation are because those are the two areas that are so heavily tied to our Iowa school performance profile. Those are the areas that help us determine if our schools are commendable, recommended, et cetera. And ultimately, if these systems are running as well as, as can be expected, we should see those results in our Big State Annual Summit of Assessment, which is called the ISAS. So literacy MTSS, going back to those five components, is what happens on a daily basis in terms of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. So that would be the core. And I put a little snippet on the slide of, for example, what third-grade literacy looks like in Marshalltown this year, week one through, I think you can see, week 10. Those are the unit titles that students would have been learning about in third grade from our new literacy curriculum. And then additionally, there's another document that connects the standards within those units, so that we're able to see that we've covered all of the Iowa Core Standards in a given year for every child. So when we look and create those curriculum maps, we're always coming back to question one and two. Are we answering, or being able to answer what we want students to know and be able to do? We use Google Team Drive to house all of these maps, so that whether, you know, you're a third-grade teacher in her first year at Anson, or you're a third-grade teacher in her 10th year at Franklin, you have the same access to these types of materials. So you can see your year at a glance, your week at a glance, to help you plan the best instruction for students. And then question two is, now that we've done all this planning and instruction, how do we know if they've learned anything? And that's where all those assessments come in, that I was talking about, the teachers do formally and informally. And those are the kind of triggers that get us thinking about who might need intervention or remediation, as well as who might need acceleration, which is coming up traditionally, you might think of report cards too in this way, as a way to look for information. So then the questions three and four, and we read about these last year as a board, too, are our teams sit and ask themselves, what will we do for the students that haven't learned it? And what will we do for the students that already know it when we start teaching it? And those are kind of where all of those other extra people fall into place in our system that are so valuable. That could be Title I teachers, it could be special education teachers, ELL teachers, or gifted and talented teachers that are serving in the XLP department. So we want to make sure that image you see there, we call that the digital, I think they call it the digital butterfly or something along those lines, maybe I just made that up, I don't remember, but it has a cute name. This is the Iowa Department. What is it?
The atomic flower.
Atomic flower, digital butterfly, sorry. The atomic flower, you want to have all five petals going, and you want to have, you want to have systems thinking within all of them in order to have a healthy, a healthy system. And so, for example, Rogers and Anson and Miller and our teams that have been identified as, or schools that have been identified as comprehensive or targeted schools went through a self-assessment where they looked at which pieces of the atomic, and I'm going to say it wrong, atomic flower were not healthy, and then they made action plans on how to address those gaps. So that's what we're doing in literacy. And the other area that gets just as much attention, which is very, I still think it's amazing that we moved to not just be talking about reading and writing, but to be valuing math at the, math at the same level as reading and writing. So we have math MTSS systems that we've slowly built up over the last couple of years to help us respond when kids are presented or given instruction by their classroom teacher that aligns with the Iowa Core Standards for Math. And so you, if you can see in that image that's listed there, those are the essential standards that grade levels K through six have identified. So in kindergarten, those are the six, five or six essential standards. They teach every standard. They guarantee that they're going to provide intervention or remediation on those standards in particular, because they are the foundational standards as students move into first grade. And then that, those are also further divided into the domains on the left side. How do we know, question two, when students have learned it? So in math, we've been very fortunate to have some really great math resources available to us that align in many ways with the reading resources. So we use FastBridge, FastBridge's Math Suite, which is early math and AMAP. We also have our ISAS data that we've now taken once. And then STMath, you've heard a lot about the Penguin and RGG life that our kids are doing. And for our pre-K6 kids that use STMath, there are quizzes in there for second graders and above and puzzles that they solve, and then we're able to kind of correlate that, those results with their unit assessments and their other data to determine who needs help in math. So for the students who haven't learned it, we don't, we're not as, we human resource-rich in math. We don't have as many people that are dedicated to helping kids who are struggling with math. Title I is still heavily focused on reading, which is pretty common in Iowa and other places. But in this case, we're trying to work as buildings so that everyone can start supporting students who are struggling with math. We also have after-school tutoring. During Bobcat University, kids get help with math also. So I think we're, we're adding to, to our intervention supports and resource supports of math year by year. And then for students who are advanced in math or already know it, they sometimes get bumped ahead a grade level in STMath, for example. They take honors or AP courses in math, they take compacted math when they get to Miller in seventh grade. So those, those are our responses in our multi-tiered system of supports for students who are high achievers in math. And then that graphic you see on the right there, I think Bob and others who are new to the board could probably attest that we use acronyms endlessly. And I liked this graphic, because I think it ties together, you know, it shows how MTSS is kind of the cornerstone and ties together the Federal Mandate of Every Student Succeeds Act, and the work our teacher leaders do, as well as differentiated accountability is what I shared earlier. That's how our state reviews our school's performance, performances in different ways. And...
I think, just before you go on, I think that if we had the atomic flower model, that we should call this the birthday present model?
Okay, B.
Come on, folks.
And it is Matt's birthday today, so very fitting. Happy birthday, Matt.
Well, lucky there. Happy birthday.
That's exactly why I did that. That's exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and there's nothing really cute see about this one. This is just a table that I think is really important. C4K is what our State Department collaborating for Iowa kids has been working on intensely and rolling to different school districts. We get lots of support from our AEA and the Department of Education, as they work with our principals and teacher leaders to ensure that we're meeting the guidance that set forth an early literacy implementation. That goes back to the, we're going to retain kids in third-grade conversation that happened years ago. And that was kind of the, what kicked off this whole conversation. So they're going to start looking very early on in preschool at how students are performing, and then they're going to help us develop MTSS, and then they're going to hold us accountable with the DA system. So they all kind of build on each other. And, yeah, so this is the part that was, that you'll hear about in the 20th, so Matt and I just have some draft notes in here, but we'll, we'll fill in the rest of it for you. And Matt will give you kind of an overview of what every kid gets, and what kids who have, what assessments we use to measure how they're responding to instruction and social-emotional leader. But my question for you is, do you have any questions for me about how MTSS works in our PK-12 system? Have I been looking at you guys sideways the whole time? I'm sorry.
We knew you were reading.
I have two screens, and I'm afraid I'm going to mess it up, so I'm not touching anything. Well, if you do have other...
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to part two from the Birthday Boy next meeting.
Absolutely, B.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Stevenson?
This is the first of four for me. No, second of four. Here we go. Okay, so, as many of you are aware, we've been participating in many Zoom meetings and conferences with Iowa Department of Education. They've been doing, hosting them at least twice a week for the last three weeks. The AEA's have also been doing that for a couple of weeks, a couple per week for a few weeks. And then we, in turn, are having our debriefing meetings here at the district level. And the most exciting one that we had on Thursday was Governor Reynolds announcing that the schools would be closed till April 30th, which we're very grateful for. We don't want to put our students' safety in jeopardy at all. But along with that came the, the challenge of quickly flipping our system into one that provides ongoing voluntary continuous learning for our students, which we need our teachers' support with, for sure. So after that telecast, I suppose, that she did at 2:30, we were all invited into a separate Zoom for educators at 4 o'clock with Dr. Anne Lebo, who's the new Director of Education, and they went through in great detail the, the choices that we have as public school districts. And then Dr. Shudy received an email, I think Sunday or today, early today, about how we can go online and fill out our application, and we need to decide by Friday, the 10th, what Marshalltown plans to do between April 13th and 30th for their students. So if you scroll up a little bit, essentially, or scroll down, and essentially, they're, they are giving us information on whether a district chooses a voluntary educational enrichment opportunity path or required educational services path. And given, let's see, there's a document that will be shared tomorrow with staff and with the TR also. But in order to make the best decision for Marshalltown's, you know, over 5,000 students, we had to think about a lot of things. We surveyed, we've been surveying parents. Dr. Shudy's been collecting feedback. We reflected and, and reviewed that data, and we recognized there's lots of challenges for our students. The five top things that came to mind are, our students were hearing that our students have challenges having access to an adult at home that can support new learning. They have struggle with access to reliable high-speed internet that is not connected to a telephone. They have challenges with access to a computer, laptop, or other device. Many students have challenges accessing learning material that has not been modified or accommodated in its presentation. That would be, in particular, our students with disabilities. And then also, many of our students have challenges accessing materials because they are still English language learners. So given all of those access challenges, we looked at the three options, which one was providing no continuous learning, which would then, in, in the end, make us have to make up those three weeks of learning. And we were not interested in that at all. And then that narrowed it down to voluntary or required. And so given the challenges with access that I just listed, we have decided as a district and hope the board supports this to move towards voluntary education enrichment opportunities. So what that means is that beginning on Monday, April 13th, we will be sharing out for all students pre-K12, assuming we get our plan approved by you all tonight, and then it gets submitted by the 10th, that our teachers are getting assigned to teams and working on teams beginning tomorrow morning to get online learning opportunities in all the content areas up for our PK-12 students. We are modeling a lot of our work after things that we've seen in other states that have already made the call that they aren't coming back to school this school year. And we are doing this with lots of guidance from others, and we're asking for lots of grace in the process, because we're trying to whip up lessons for, meaningful lessons for 5,000 students in less than a week's notice. And I wanted to remind you that because they're voluntary, students won't be given grades, for, for example, during that process. But we are going to be engaging with families and engaging with students. We recently learned we're able to offer new learning during that time, which is exciting. We're kind of able to keep on pace somewhat as to what skills kids would be working on in math, for example, or science during this time, in whatever grade level they may be in. And another note of caution that is in this article I plan to share, we have over 516 students who are currently enrolled in dual credit classes with MCC. And even though we're choosing the voluntary path, that in no way slows down the work of our MCC students, dual credit students, because they are moving to an online platform and going as if they were in session, if that makes sense. So I'm happy to report that our choice or recommendation to, to do voluntary will not in any way slow down the credit earning and work that our high schoolers are, are working on. It's pretty self-explanatory. There are no required, like, hours or minutes per day that students need to be participating in the voluntary learning, but I'm really proud of our team, because all of those access issues that I listed earlier, we're working on solutions collaboratively. So we're trying to get Chromebooks out like crazy to people. We're trying to figure out how to get Wi-Fi access. Matt and I are going to be meeting with our special education team in the morning, try to figure out what resources we can give to help in conjunction with the AEA, so that whatever we do develop is accessible to students with disabilities. And the same for our English learners. So I think there's a lot of things that we've done that we need to be proud of, but we also know that we have, we have a lot of work ahead of us here in the next few days to get this ready to go. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you is that we do recognize that not all activities should be plugged or plugged in for children, nor will we probably reach 100% of our families with a device with Wi-Fi. And so for that reason, we will be creating paper packets that will be similar, at the same content as what students will have access to online. And I'll be working with Rex and Lynn to coordinate how best next week we can get those packets out, whether it's at our school distribution sites or at our meal drop-off sites, which, without clogging up the bus route or slowing down the bus route, we're going to try to get that accomplished all by next Monday. Um, we're going to try to get that accomplished all by next Monday.
Questions for Dr. Stevenson.
In order to get those packs ready, oh, who wants to go first? Jan, do you want to go first? Go ahead.
You've addressed the dual enroll for MCC and I appreciate that. Um, what are we doing about credits for the high school students that have to earn so many credits for semester? Graduation.
Um, so that's a great question and it, it's um, something that Eric and Jackie, um, the two principals of Emily and MHS as long. As well as Dr. Shudy and I have been talking about almost daily for the last week. Um, we, Jackie, I believe, has a guidance letter that's going to be going out to high school students and their parents. If it hasn't gone out tonight, it'll go out tomorrow. I believe it was translated. Um, that will explain to them how they can access pass fail options, how they can turn in work that was not completed prior to March fifth. Um, to get their grade to passing or increase their grades. Um, so we're going to do everything in our power to um. Ensure that students that were on track for graduation don't lose that opportunity.
Karina.
Yeah, that was one of my questions. Also for those, um, I see that there's like packets, you said, paper packets that. So will the teachers be able to go into the facilities to do the, um, or are they?
So that's the extra challenge of this week is I'm from an equity point of view, I want whatever we put up online. Online on Monday, the thirteenth to be simultaneously available on, in paper packets Monday. But Friday's holiday is kind of putting a wrinkle in this work because we've asked the teachers to have their online work done by Thursday. So that we could have a, you know, I don't know, will you a secretarial staff or, or how we'll get this accomplished, but. I don't know, we'll get paper, our goal is to get paper packets made on Fridays. Um, to help with distribution, uh, but I think we're going to probably not be able to get paper packets out till Tuesday. Cause we're gonna, we're missing a day this week is essentially what's happening um, for next week.
Are we thinking as the elementary level or is it for upper grades too?
No, we think that um, I even sat in the seven twelve coaches meeting today and they were thinking about, you know, being able to um. Print off, um, you know, short stories or, um, you know, maybe a historical fiction piece for social studies or a lab report. Or just something that would um, mimic or look similar to what the online learning would be about in terms of content. And then the, the children would have an opportunity to access that and then, you know, do some, answer some questions on the back or um, do some reflective writing. That's kind of what we're envisioning. I, we're not trying to, nor is going green in HR than I'm making a million pieces of paper copies. Um, and we, you know, we won't know, I think, until we get into it week to week about how many parents need the paper or want the paper. Um, Amy's survey that she's doing with families about um, internet access will help kind of inform us in that way. But we also know, I, I don't know the exact numbers, but not all of our families. Um, are picking up meals at those sites and that's our venue for distribution. So, you know, we're learning from others. I, I did hear. Um, I think it was college community that they're putting the paper packets at the Casey's gas stations around town and. Parents can pick them up when they get gas or whatever they do. I just, we don't, we don't want to encourage unhealthy social distancing practices and so. It's just, we're taking this seriously and slowly and we're going to get it, we're going to get it right, but we ask for a little grace in the process because it's. It's not easy.
Lisa, this is Mike Miller. May I ask a question?
Sure.
So thank you for um, weeding through this. This can't have been easy. If we're going to offer voluntary uh, instruction to kids. And let's fast forward thirty or forty-five days and assume we come back to school at the first of May or the fifteenth of May or something like that. And some of the kids have participated in voluntary instruction and some of them have not participated. When we come back to school, where does a teacher pick up in their curriculum or education?
I, I think that's a pretty realistic scenario. Um, you know, I'm, if my crystal ball would tell me that probably fifty percent of our kids will. Will take advantage of this voluntary learning and about fifty percent will not. Um, so from a teacher's point of view, that's exceptionally challenging when you get your class back in front of you, whether it's. You know, for two weeks at the end of the year or four weeks. I mean, we don't have any way of knowing at this point. And to be fair, this is really going to impact us down the road in August when we hopefully get back rolling um, in a normal manner. Um, I guess, Mike, it kind of goes back to our mission where we talk about personalized learning. You know, I think we're going to have to think about we probably won't be planning lessons. Um, like a one, I don't, we don't do that exactly now either, but I think we'll have to be even more skilled in how we. Present lessons because there are going to be half the kids in the room that. Um, the new material put in front of them is going to exaggerate the gap that they had because they didn't have the stuff in the middle. Um, so it'll take some real careful planning and, and conversation and. Um, we are hoping this, I think Jackie did put this in the letter to, to. You know, to extend um, the pass fail option or the graded option um, to students should we return after May first because. You know, you might think you're on a good path and then you get back to school and this, you know, is, is really tough for you and. We wouldn't want this semester, you know, to ruin anyone's grade point average, if that makes sense, you know, kids want to take the pass fail option.
Thank you.
Other questions? I would please like to caution you that when you mentioned um, having secretaries do some things on Friday. That Good Friday is a holiday and you'll be paying them time and a half or double time.
Yeah, that's why we won't be able to do that this Friday. So if anything, it would be Monday at the early.
Okay, other questions?
I have just one. How are we getting the message out to parents? Do we have teachers assigned to certain students that they're trying to contact these parents? How are the messages getting out?
Um, yes, so teachers um, either have contacted parents through Infinite Campus or they use Google Classroom. Um, some use apps like Class Dojo or Remind, but basically. Um, I think Jan, I feel pretty comfortable saying that all of our teachers understand the importance or have understood over the last few weeks. Of being in contact with families um, and or students. Um, tomorrow morning, there'll be a document that goes out to via email from me. That talks about teacher expectations during student closure. So we did a PK six version and a seven twelve version. Um, just to be clear about, um, based on the feedback again that we heard in the thought exchange from Dr. Shudy, teachers. Um, wanted some more clarity in what does being on call for work mean? Because they're facing a new reality of having, you know, caring for elderly parents or sick people, or they have their children home with them because daycares are closed, schools are closed. Um, so they're trying to navigate their jobs in this new reality. And so. This guidance document just is very brief and talked about what we would expect teachers to do at a minimum daily versus weekly. Um, and we talked about, you know, checking email, communicating with families, meeting in your PLC, attending a staff meeting weekly, et cetera. So. I'm hopeful, Jan, that for those that maybe weren't communicating with their families as um, much as others, that that document or those documents. Give them some um, some detail as to what we are asking as a system of them during this time.
That makes sense and we found that you did have to be somewhat creative about trying to reach some of these parents. But no, that, that, it sounds good. One of the things that um, I read the comments from the staff too. And having been doing this for a couple of weeks, um, I don't have any children at home. So for me, my work day doesn't look a whole lot different, except that I'm at home doing everything on Zoom. But for parent, teachers that have children at home or sick people are taking care of. What we're noticing is sometimes they're posting these lessons in the middle of the night. So you, you know, for parents to realize that teachers may not actually be on duty from eight to four, because not only they're doing their teaching duties, but they're often. Still homeschooling their children and taking care of sick people. So their, their hours are going to end up being somewhat more flexible.
And I think our, our teachers are just awesome. Like they think of all these things that we need to think of and be mindful of too, and they're very worried about. Um, certain populations of our community, um, our Southeast Asian students, our students from Africa that speak some of those less familiar languages. Um, and so we are working, Adam's been awesome about um, connecting with Rachel Inks and embark to get. Um, some common, you know, like really important documents out to them and help them understand. Um, you know, what school closure means, how, what the buses coming by mean in terms of the meals and um, how do you get a Chromebook? Or yeah, everyone's just gone above and beyond by far. Um, even though it's not normal, like you said, Jan, for. They might be doing this at night when their kids go to bed or, you know, they're, they're doing it on the weekend when their spouse is off work. Um, and that's okay. I mean, this isn't a typical eight to four type of world that we're in right now.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to your school starting end times.
Okay, so pre-COVID, I was like, I think this is how we start thinking about things. This was very important and I couldn't wait to talk to you guys about this. Um, but this is for next year. Um, we have been studying and working through the atomic flower you saw earlier. Trying to figure out, how do we get MT, how do we get all this time in our student day? So that kids can have access to everything they need and we can wrap around supports for them um, when they are not. Learning or at the levels that we need them to be. And so the, the common theme I hear every year is there just isn't enough time in the day to get that. Um, and so after dividing this up a million ways, um, finally, I just said, well, you know what? Let's try to make some time. Let's see if we can get ten more minutes. Um, and so what you see there is. Um, and preschool started a lot of this, to be fair, back in January, um, because we were struggling with bus routes. We are at capacity on our preschool busing routes. Um, and we were trying to stagger buses and it was, it was, it's a big challenge. And so. Preschool kind of opened the door to this conversation. We said, what if we started preschool like ten minutes earlier? What would that mean? And then that opened the door to elementary saying, well, could we start elementary ten minutes earlier too? And then, you know, how the rest plays out. So you'll see here, um, we were serving anywhere from four hundred and ten to four hundred and fifteen minutes a day. Pre-COVID in our system. Um, and mind you, teacher's day is always eight to four. Um, in this nineteen twenty reality, it would remain eight to four in twenty twenty-one. However, we would extend the student minutes so that everyone had four hundred and twenty minutes. K twelve and the way we're doing that is by starting um, the K six buildings ten minutes earlier and the seven twelve five minutes earlier. So principals have been hopeful that this gets approved by the board. Um, it obviously impacts many things. So if you slide down a little bit. Um, or up, um, there's a rationale, things we want to do with this ten minutes. We want to be able to give more support, social emotional learning support, which we think will have a greater, you know, ripple effect on student behavior and. Um, people's um, feeling of belonging at school and at work. Um, it also gives us some much-needed academic student learning time so that we can intervene in math and other areas. Um, we did not want to compromise lunchtime or recess time. We wanted to keep that the same. We also wanted kids to still have that forty-five minutes of specials a day, um, so that we can, you know, be mindful of the whole child. Um. Okay, and then, so those are all the reasons why we wanted to add these minutes. And if you go further in the document. Um, there was an ask, um, we shared this with MEA back in February. Um, there was an ask about teacher prep time and how that would impact teacher prep. So you can kind of see here. Um, the time that teachers have without students before, uh, in nineteen twenty, pre-COVID. And then what we're proposing, what this five or ten minutes will mean um, for next school year. And at the very bottom, you'll see, um, I've been in communication with Lynn and with Rex because obviously our breakfast will have to be. Um, bumped up if we're starting school earlier. Um, there was a suggestion that we add minutes to the end of the day. That was unanimously rejected by the principals because of all the after-school conflicts with. Um, extracurriculars and coaching and tutoring and after-school programs and. Um, the list went on and on. So when we landed on before was the best option, that meant breakfast would need to be adjusted. Um, worked with Lynn Large on that and then transportation also. So Rex would be picking his routes up a little bit earlier. And then because our buses would be running on a different schedule that then impacts Saint Francis and Marshalltown Christian School as well as. The city of Marshalltown and their public city buses that many of our students ride. So once we get board approval um, on this, we will. Um, notify our partners listed below. Do you have any questions?
You, uh, can you, I can't understand the chart on page two. I, I can't, I don't know how it makes sense. I don't get it.
Um, okay, so for example, if I'm a priest, well, maybe preschool is not a good example. Let's do K four. Um, they're, they have a thirty-minute lunch period and a forty-five-minute prep. So those are the two times during the day. That does not include before or after school when um, they do not have students, um, student responsibilities. So that's a. Uh, total of seventy.
Oh, I get it now. I got it. Wait, I got it. I got it. I, I figured it out. Yeah, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a total of seventy-five. And then the second column, is there before and after school time? So. Right now, as is at K four, students, they would not um, hypothetically have to be start teaching until eight thirty. So they would have eight to eight thirty as before time and then students are dismissed at three twenty. They'd have three twenty to four, which is, um.
Yeah.
That time, so.
I get it. I get it now.
So the impact, and maybe the most important thing to look at is that far right column.
Yeah, it's just K through four and five and six.
Right, so K four teachers will have ten minutes before school, barely less than they've had. Than they would have had this year. And then Lanninghan teachers, five minutes.
Got it. Thank you.
What is, I guess this hasn't been presented to teachers, right?
Uh, it was presented to the MEA group, which has um, in most cases, building representation and shared with teachers.
There are ten minutes before school? It's just, I mean, as far as maybe ten minutes rather than the, I mean, because that's a big difference that they had. Ten minutes prior to having it for, what was it, twenty minutes that they had before? Thirty minutes.
They had thirty and now they have twenty, I think, before school.
No, they had thirty and now they will have ten. Right?
No, they're starting, they're starting at eight twenty, so they're losing ten minutes.
Okay.
In some cases, teachers are asked to help with breakfast or have breakfast duty depending on the elementary building. Sometimes they eat it in the classroom. It's a building level decision. So um, I can't say confidently that. Every teacher has eight to eight twenty open. It, it just depends on the building and. What they decide with their building leadership team in terms of who's supervising the children's breakfast and where.
Other questions? When will we be asked to approve this?
Um, so this will come back for approval on four twenty.
Thank you. Let's move on to. Social studies and language arts curriculum.
Okay. So at the March um, ninth meeting, right? Yes. March ninth. At the March ninth meeting, I gave you a curriculum update. Um, that you would be hearing again from me in April, um, about our request. Um, to support curriculum adoption based on our seven-year cycle. And so. Um, typically Erica Fenders and Pam Burrow-Michael would help me with this, but given we're in this Zoom, I'm just going to walk through the. in this Zoom, I'm just going to walk through the information. So tonight, you're presented with this information. And then I'll come back, as B said, on the 20th um, for formal approval of the budget ask. And so to catch you up here, um, this is a summary of what's happening or been happening in K-6's social studies. June, the 1920 school year is the last year for school districts to get their um, instruction aligned with the new Iowa social study standards that are not that new anymore. I think they're three years old. So this is kind of time sensitive. We've got to get um, this rolling for K-6. Um, so it explains kind of the who, what, when, where, the group that worked on this together. I'm very grateful for the Iowa Department of Education's free resources, and they're actually really good ones too. High quality that they've created um, for our use for our teachers. The reason why social studies seems a little bit more expensive than maybe it has in the past, if you've been on the board for a while, is because I did go ahead and include the junior achievement six-year um, renewal in that in that 123,000. So all of our students have access to junior achievement in the classroom. And then we have an annual um fee that we pay to junior achievement and uh, the replenishment of the kits. So that's a pretty big chunk of this money. Um, so over a six-year cycle, that amounts to $20,627 um, for K-6's social studies at a per pupil cost of 842. So we're spending $8.42 per year for social studies materials um, for each of our children. And then if you scroll um, further in the document, you can kind of see the State Historical Society that I was saying uh, in conjunction with the Department of Ed is giving us materials for free. The financial literacy lessons from Iowa State University Extension are awesome too, and our committee really liked them. Um, we just have to buy some books to support the lesson plans. Um, mini-cues are really, really great um, resources that involve writing and social studies. Um, a $5,000 estimate for the Social Studies Committee teachers to continue to work to pull all of this together this summer for the teachers. JA costs 13,500 per year for K-6 at a six-year cost of 81,000. Um, and then lastly, um, all of this stuff I've talked about with social studies really is designed to end at grade five as an elementary um, kind of benchmark moving to middle school, but because of Marshalltown's alignment or organization, sixth grade is um, in our intermediate school. Um, so what we've done for sixth grade is choose to use the instructional materials that align with our seventh and eighth grade social studies that you approved for purchase last year. Um, so to purchase um, the online access and classroom texts for the 406 graders, um, that is $26,655.
Questions for Lisa? And this will be coming from your curriculum budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Second part of this topic is um, the 712 adaption. So again, um, following up on what you heard in early March, we have had a team of 712 teachers. Um, pretty um, good-sized team actually that worked together throughout the 1920 school year. You can read about that in the paragraph. They saw some wonderful vendor presentations um, on February 25th and then were able to give their input to the smaller team and me. Um, there was not a consensus on the, the final two or three that we looked at. And so we dug even deeper with a smaller team that's in that rationale document to help us land and, and support the decision to purchase StudySync as our core resource in grades seven through 11. Um, I think I've said this now many times in four years of talking to you, but ELA is really, English Language Arts is really expensive. It's our most expensive adoption. Last year it was um, the materials we bought for K-6 and now this year it's 712. So as you see there, the total cost is with AP Annual Advanced Placement English Courses have annual renewal charges. The total cost is 286,000, which actually came in under budget. I, I thought it would be about 350,000. Um, so that was good news. Um, and then looking at our six-year cycle, that's about $47,709 a year. Um, and our 712 um, students were spending $19.88 per year for them to have um, paper and digital access to English Language Arts materials. You see there you know, it sounds like an easy thing, but it's a pretty complicated process. We're talking about honors classes, advanced placement classes, dual credit classes, dual language classes, and then all of the fun electives like speech and drama, creative writing, like all of those types of courses are listed there. One good thing, a silver lining maybe about everything that's going on with COVID is that once we see, receive board approval on the 20th, we immediately start flipping these um, purchase orders out to the companies and they start shipping materials to us. So I'm under the um, fingers crossed that uh, this is not, that COVID isn't going to affect distribution and that we'll get our books and everything will be great. Um, but because teachers are not in front of students per se, that we might even be able to get some professional development with teachers um, yet before the year is out and get some curriculum maps started. So maybe it'll ease some of the anxiety that we normally have in August when we have all these new materials and all this new learning.
Questions for Lisa? Thank you. See you next month.
Two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you want me to wait till May to come back?
No, no. Let's get it moving on here.
Can I also go to the bathroom? I don't want you to think I'm leaving forever.
Well, thank you for announcing that. Paulette, are we on to you?
I'll take this one. So kind of keeping with the theme of COVID-19, as you'll remember when uh, at our last board meeting, I believe we uh, passed a resolution uh, that addressed the issue of how we were going to uh, handle paying or not our employees that when school is not in session uh, generally wouldn't uh, be working and paid. And we had chosen that time for the duration of the initial four-week closure that Governor Reynolds had announced to continue to, to pay these employees. We're talking about namely our peer educators, which we have quite a few upwards of 150 or so, our bus monitors and also our 10-month secretaries. It, uh, I absolutely feel uh, and felt at that time that in the midst of this crisis that paying them even though they weren't uh, necessarily able to provide service and school was not in session was the right decision uh, to make. So uh, that four weeks of closure, of course, comes to an end here at the end of this week. And so I've got before you two options of resolutions for which we need to choose one in terms of how to handle uh, the next three weeks of the extended closure. I will say that over the course of the last two weeks, a considerable amount of time has been spent by our Director of Finance, Paulette Newbold, or Director of Human Resources, or Dr. Nora Ryan and myself trying to um, assess the options. And basically the option is e- either to continue to pay uh, people who otherwise wouldn't be working at this period of time or to exercise the option of furlough, knowing that uh, anyone that would be furloughed would be guaranteed a job upon school resuming. Um, and that from everything that we can tell, under the condition of furlough, that our employees, assuming that they'd be eligible for unemployment, would be made at least whole uh, between the state unemployment and the federal stimulus infusion there. But while evaluating that, which is included, talking to Iowa Workforce Development and being involved in conversations there, talking to our state legislators, being a part of UEN Urban Education Network Superintendent Meetings and AEA Superintendent Meetings, where it's been discussed and ultimately discussing also with our legal counsel. Uh, we believe that the, the most appropriate uh, approach will be to either choose to extend uh, our paying our employees that otherwise would not, that aren't currently working uh, over the course of the next three weeks or exercise the option of the board approving uh, to give me the authority to determine whether we can continue to pay these employees for the duration of time that we remain in school closure. I think there's strong reason to believe that uh, based on what the national research says and the health experts that knowing that we're two weeks out maybe of hitting the peak of this virus, uh, that it's going to take a period of time in order to come down from that peak. And I'm not sure why it'd be any safer when we're coming down from the peak than it's been while we've been closed building up to the peak. So I guess I'm saying that there's high probability that we're probably going to be extended beyond April 30th, in my opinion, which um, would lead to having to make this decision again at the next board meeting, assuming that we would know whether there's an extension. Uh, and according to what the governor told us, there likely would be. The most compelling reason uh, for us to continue to pay our employees that otherwise would not be working and paid at this time, I think, is the fact that in the recent federal stimulus bill, I believe it was the CARES Act, there's a, a portion of that that's called the Education Stabilization Fund. Um, I know that our DE made formal application uh, for that today. And uh, through that fund, all districts are supposed to get funding to help support a number of different things that can be used for, including helping get kids and families connected uh, with devices for technology as well as internet access. Um, as an example, I know our Director of Technology, Amy Harmson, has been working hard to not only assess what the true status of uh, lack of access of our students, but also to find ways like through hotspots and accessing those that we can check out to, to families that would provide them with access. I think these funds will be able to be used in order to help support some of the costs that are going to be associated with that going forward. One of the caveats of that educational stabilization fund that's coming from the federal government is that in order to be eligible to receive those funds, uh, states and districts that would be receiving the money have to show that they're, to the greatest extent possible, continuing to pay its employees and/or contractors during the period of time that schools closed uh, or disrupted due to the coronavirus. So for that reason, as much as any other, I, I strongly feel that um, we need to approve one of these two approaches, either to continue to pay for the duration of the closure as it now stands, which would be basically till April 30th or May 1st. Or the other, which would be for the board to give me the authority to continue to pay for the duration of the closure, whatever that may be beyond uh, May 1st. I, although we don't know what the true amount of the stimulus funding is going to mean for our district, we do know that we won't have access to that if we choose to furlough or lay off employees. Um, I think the other important thing to note is that as we make these decisions, and I mentioned this before at the last meeting, to pay employees that otherwise wouldn't be working and getting paid when school's not in session. It also really kind of ties our hands financially on what we can do in terms of extending the school year. At the last uh, board meeting prior to knowing for sure about the waiver provision, uh, we had talked about possibly extending uh, the school year three weeks in order to accommodate the closure. But once that waiver uh, was made and we decided to pay uh, our employees for the four-week closure, that really kind of handcuffed us a little bit in terms of what we could do in terms of extending the year. So as it stands right now, we're probably going to be looking at uh, going back to our original ending date for students, which is Thursday, June 4th, I believe, or 5th. And um, with our staff, uh, knowing that we had the one snow day to make up, their last day would be on June 8th. So um, I'm entertaining, I guess, discussion as to whether members of the board feel strongly one way or the other regarding the resolution. If we approve the resolution to, to continue to pay our employees through April 30th, then um, you know, we'll be coming back to you probably on the 20th to uh, have to make a decision moving forward in the, the month of May. If school is closed into May or through the end of the year. If, um, if you approve the other resolution, which is to allow me to have the discretion to continue that payment beyond uh, April 30th or whatever duration, school continues to be closed. Then that would be the appropriate route there. The nice thing about that is that our employees won't be worried who are in this situation. They won't continue to have anxiety and fear as to what their future holds as far as being paid.
Hey, it looks like B got moved out of the participants and into the attendees.
Theron, um, either resolution allows you or mandates that you will pay employees either to April 30th or till whenever we get back to school. Is that right?
Yeah, the one basically uh, grants the opportunity to pay them through the 30th, which is the current uh, closure date uh, by the governor. The other one allows us to continue to pay them for the duration of the closure. So if that goes into May or to the end of the year, it would just commit us to uh, doing that and letting people know that that's our intention.
Okay. I, I, I think that uh, I would just as soon give you the authority to pay employees through the end of the closure uh, so that one, we don't have to come back into, do this again. And two, as you said, give employees certainty that they will be paid for the duration and not have to have uh, anxiety or fear about that.
I agree.
I think the other thing that's important to note here, and Paul, you can uh, chime in too if, if you wish, is that you know, there's, there's definitely a lot of desire on our current legislative leadership's part to have schools continue to pay employees uh, while we're closed. And I think part of that has been uh, with the premise that, you know, we've given you the money, we, you've budgeted the money to pay these employees of schools in session. Uh, we should continue to do that. And, and there is truth to that. I think there's also grave concern about further um, expanding the amount of people that are on unemployment for the state with the significant uh, levels that that has reached. I, the, the part of it that I don't think people recognize though, is that a lot of these people that were continuing to pay the cost of their uh, of the special ed and its special ed pair is primarily is subsidized with Medicaid reimbursement that we don't receive when school's not in session. So um, those costs, and Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we've calculated that uh, they could be upwards of 6, 5 to $600,000 if school does not come back into session. Uh, we, there'd be somewhere between 4 and $600,000 that we would not recoup, I believe. of Medicaid reimbursement. So what happens with that, then, is that that will roll over into the special ed deficit that Matt talks to you about each year. And in the future, just becomes a part of the property tax equation. So I think that, that's the long-term effect that these decisions make. But that being said, I still think it's the right decision at this point in time. It's a decision that a high percentage of school districts are going to be making this week and next, probably. And a big part of it is, we would not want to exclude ourselves from the federal funds that are coming to help us out either.
Well, and addressing it from a special needs standpoint, which of course is where I stand, but I also worked for many years in Marshalltown, where we had a lot of students with the second language concerns. When we get moving on some of this education, we may find that even that the students are interested in receiving the instruction, but even with it being voluntary, they may need more support. And if we have those pairs being paid, then we can call on them and say, "Could you meet with this student once or twice a week on Zoom and help them get these things figured out?" And, and those people are there for us. And I just feel like there's also the, the fact that people could get sick and we could end up short-staffed trying to cover some of the special needs that students have. So it makes sense to keep paying them.
Yeah, and we've been engaging our employees, both the certified and classified, with professional development during this time of closure, certainly. And we have more professional development that we're going to be pushing out. We don't have enough that's probably going to carry our classified staff to the end of the year. But it's not as if they're not working and not doing anything. We're providing quite a bit of opportunity for them to learn and grow and to integrate that information into their profession when we get back to school.
Other questions for Dr. Shudey? Mike, do you want to make that motion?
Okay, I can make the motion. Usually Sean's better at wording these than me. I move that we give Dr. Shudey the authority to pay employees throughout the duration of the school closure.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Miller McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The same? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Paulette, Budget Amendment?
Budget Amendment. So if you recall at the last meeting, we reviewed our budget amendments and published said amendment in the newspaper as required, had our public hearing at the beginning of this meeting. So now we're just looking for board action to approve this budget amendment. There's two functional areas in which we need to amend. One is the total other expenditures, and that was due to our debt refinancing. And the other was in the total support services for increased instructional staff support services, and that's just a small increase.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for the current fiscal year as presented?
So moved, Untee.
Second, Miller.
Untee, Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries seven zero. 2020-21?
All right. And also at the last meeting, we had a certified budget presentation for the 21 school year. If you recall, in that presentation, there's two statutory requirements that come out of this budget process. One of those is that we publish our estimated expenditures. And following that presentation, you gave me the authority to publish the, this proposed budget in the newspaper, which it has been. We published an estimated expenditures for next year of just under $81 million. The second part of this is to certify a tax rate. And the tax rate that was published is going to be stable at about $18.34 per thousand. So what we are looking for now is just board approval of this proposed budget.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 school budget as presented?
So moved, Heitman.
Second, Untee.
Second, Faltus. Is that correct?
Yes.
Heitman-Faltus, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? The motion carries seven zero. Amy, are you up for Acer?
Yes, I am. So I am here to present, first of all, our typical replacement. So I am asking to request bids for our typical replacement cycle for Chromebooks. This year, it is, I have the chart down here. This year, we are replacing 7th grade, 10th grade, preschool and kindergarten, as well as transitional kindergarten Chromebooks. So that is two different models. 7th and 10th grade are the Acer C733s. And then the younger kiddos get the touchbook, the touch Chromebook. And then I broke it up into two proposals because there are some vendors that have the ability to go ahead and quote some new carts for us and the gumdrop cases, which accompany the 7th grade devices. So this is a request to ask vendors to quote both our typical replacement cycle Chromebooks and then also some of the accessories.
Questions for Amy?
Okay. So now, this second RFP that I'm presenting is not as typical. I am simply asking to be able to get quotes for the same exact model of Chromebook for two more classes. And that is essentially to be able to move quickly to purchase Chromebooks if we have any lost, damaged items that we typically wouldn't have budgeted for because we weren't sending them home with K6 students. So this is so that we can have a quote ready. And then as soon as we intake devices, hopefully some point in June, we would then be able to assess what we get back and the state of what we get back and quickly purchase to be ready for August.
So is this second proposal to seek bids or to use the same bid that you already have?
They're two separate. We would seek because this would be for a higher quantity of just one model of Chromebook. So this is 820 quantity of one model. This is the Acer 733, C733. And the typical replacement, yes.
Hold on, your sound went out.
Oh, man.
I can hear her.
Yeah, I think it was just for you, Nora.
Maybe it was just me. I can't hear anybody.
Nora just got a brand new computer and she's having some problems. So this, the first RFP, I'm going to flip back to that really quick, is for two grade levels, 10th grade and 7th grade, with this Acer C733. And then for lower grade levels, preschool through kindergarten, of this R752. So that is, that bid would be actually separate than this bid, which would be for the model that is the most universal, that we think we would probably need to replace the most of. So we'd look at that and we would hope to not get anywhere near this quantity, but we'd like to get up to the ability to pay for that quantity if need be.
Questions for Amy?
So you're separating these bids because you're figuring, you're hoping you won't need the second one, but if you needed it, what would it cost?
Yes.
Well, some of these companies give you a discount, though, if you had these two bids together. I don't know how.
I don't think we want to commit to buying if we don't need to. So the first, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, the first proposal is part of our normal annual technology replacement cycle and has been budgeted for. The second is a what-if, or if needed.
That's what I thought, and that makes sense to me.
Say that one more time. You're muted, Jan.
Yeah, that is what I thought, and that makes sense to me. So really, with the second one, you're not actually planning on the spending, but you want to know what it would cost if you had to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the request for proposal for the Acer Chromebooks as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The same? Carried seven zero. Thank you. Is Rex online?
Let me check. There he is. Rex, are you on?
Yeah, I see everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Do you have the ability to turn on video or do, would you not?
Yeah, this, this one does not turn on the video.
Okay.
Before you, as a request to purchase buses this year, got three bids. We could not bring this to you before now because of the waiting for the D R E grant, which you approved a little earlier. And so we're requesting that you approve the purchase of three buses from Hoagland. And the difference will be in this is we're looking at going from 39-inch seats to 36-inch seats to comply with seatbelts. When looking around and talking with different districts, a lot of them are saying they're not using that third seatbelt because of the kids' bookbags, their coats in the winter months. And they found going to the wider aisles, got kids on and off the buses better. The biggest downfall of this is now a 77-passenger bus is actually a 53-passenger bus when you go two per seat versus the three per seat. And 35-passenger bus really becomes a 23-passenger bus because you're going to the two people per seat. There is really no difference between the 39-inch seat in terms of price. There is no difference between the 39-inch and the 36. But we're just recommending go with the 36 to give that, because we're not going to use that other belt and also gives us a little bit more room in those aisles for those kids to go up and down the aisle easier, getting on and off.
Questions for Rex? May I have a motion to approve the Hoagland Bus Company, the bid for three buses in the amount of $271,343 as presented?
So moved, Untee.
Second.
Untee, who?
Miller.
Untee, Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Shudey?
We've got our construction contract that F E H put together for Garland Construction, which Garland has approved. We did bet it with our attorneys at Allers and made recommended changes before we gave it to Garland. I would recommend that the board approve this. We had our first pre-construction meeting today, which went really well. Garland is looking at hoping to start Phase 1 construction later this month. We're anxiously waiting to see what happens with further potential school closure in the event that school gets closed beyond April 30th. And that impacts the spring sports seasons, meaning if tennis winds up being canceled. We've talked to Garland about, instead of doing this project in phases, doing it all at the same time, which would allow for the project to get done sooner and also save some money. So ultimately, we should know more around April 16th as to whether there's a chance of school resuming effective May 1st and/or the spring sports season still being held. And if not, we may take a different course of action instead of constructing this in phases, actually doing it all at the same time. But I recommend approval of this contract with Garland as well as just simply accepting the letter that they sent us. In addition to that, it's not part of the contract, but included in that is my response to their letter.
Questions for Dr. Shudey? Did you have a question, Mike? You're lit up.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Move for approval.
May I have a second to that emotion?
Second, Untee.
Miller, Untee, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? The motion carries seven zero. Onto board policies.
I apologize upfront to the board for the plethora of board policies before you tonight, most of which are transportation-related. But the reason for it is because Rex, with Paulette's assistance, is an overhaul of the transportation handbook. And in order to do that, we have to have some policies come before you. And I think we've got a good way to make this as painless as possible. So the first two policies are policies related to technology, 402.6, staff technology use and social networking, and 402.6 R, which is a related regulation. There were no changes from the last meeting where these were reviewed by you. We are recommending that you approve these as amended and waive the second, or the first, the second.
Second. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Untee, McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? The motion carries seven zero.
Oh, shucks. Can I make mention of one thing? Is this, this also, oh, wait. No, no, no. Well, I'll wait till we get to the next item. That's what it is. Sorry.
Okay.
All right. Dr. Ryan is going to speak to the next three policies.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Now we can't.
I'll, I'll run over and get her. I'll be right back.
Ah, that's it. Yeah, the bus thing. Right. Ah, that's it. Yeah, the bus thing. Right. I don't think it matters very much.
We need a sign language interpreter for when Nora's on.
We can't hear you. Back. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now? Okay. Let's, third time's a charm. The three policies before you, the first three there on the list, were all developed in conjunction with the Allers team in Des Moines. The nepotism policy is, do I need to, I can control, here we go. Is, this would be brand new to the district. This is saying in some that, you know, more than one family member can be employed. However, if one is going to oversee the other or be the evaluator of the other family member, that would need to be approved by the board before allowing that employee to be, to be employed by us. And that would need to have approval by you folks. That's the first nepotism one. The second, fraternization, speaks to, obviously, there's a power differential when you are overseeing an individual. And if there is a romantic relationship, that has to be, well, first of all, we discourage that. And if that does develop, that has to be reported to the superintendent immediately so that we can take remedial measures. Again, a very standard fraternization policy. And then the third one on your list speaks to resignations of certified personnel. Several districts across Iowa, across the country, especially in Iowa, have a very similar. This would be a brand new, again, to the district, but common across Iowa. This is stating that once a certified staff member, once the contracts are due, if the certified staff member has signed the contract saying, yep, I'm good, I'm coming back. But then after they are due, that individual resigns. There would be a $1,000 fee for that. And that, that cost is incurred for the time and effort it takes to repost, re-interview, go through the applications. You know, they call them liquidated damages. So again, if it's an individual resigns after they've already submitted their contract in that due date. $1,000 is pretty standard. Several districts have $1,500. Some districts even have up to $5,000. And so we feel $1,000 is appropriate for our district. Obviously, there are times when that can be waived. It depends on circumstances. For good cause, we can waive that $1,000. So those are, that's just what I wanted to mention about those first three in the list.
Questions on those? They'll need to come back?
Yeah, sorry. So they'll come back for that first reading on 4/20.
Questions for Dr. Ryan at this time? Okay, moving on. Dr. Shutey?
Okay, the next wave of policies have been grouped as policies that we've reviewed that are in existence, and we simply want to mark them as reviewed. The only adjustments will be to code references. The first policy is 711.1, student school transportation eligibility. The second is 711.1R1, student eligibility for bus service. 711.4, summer school program transportation service. 711.5, transportation of non-resident and non-public school students. 711.6, transportation in non-school groups. 711.8, transportation in inclement weather. And one of the policies that Sarah Fultus reviewed, 907, United States Flag Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Those we are all recommending be marked as reviewed.
Are there any questions or objections to that?
Ah, there, no, there's just a note that in the 907A1, United States Flag Procedures for Displaying the Flag in Respect for the Flag, there is a misspelling of the word Columbia, as in District of Columbia.
Okay, we will correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That one's going to come back as a first reading anyway, Theron.
Well, 907 would be marked as reviewed.
But.
There's a regulation that will come back.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was a policy that's recommended for deletion in Transportation, 711.9, Transportation Insurance Program.
May I have a motion to delete 711.9?
So moved, unteed.
Heightened, unteed? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, the same? The motion carries 7-0.
The next set of policies and Rex, and tie in or pipe in on these would come back for a first reading because there have been changes made. 711.2, School Transportation has amendments relative to cameras on the buses, as well as warnings for behavior and how those will be handled by the Transportation Director. 711.2 is a new regulation from IASB that outlines student conduct on school transportation. 711.2R2 is also an IASB regulation, use of recording devices on school buses. 711.3 is a policy that we have, that we've amended, extracurricular activities, bus service. 711.7 is a new policy from IASB, School Bus Safety Instruction. 711.9 is an IASB policy on district vehicle idling. 711.10 is school bus passenger restraints. That's an IASB policy.
And Theron, on that 711.10, we would request that we table that because we don't think the proper language was attached there. That wasn't, the attachment is not the policy that we intended to share.
Okay. So we'll table that one and something will come back for review at the next meeting. And then lastly, adjustments were made to a policy that Sarah reviewed, United States Flag Procedure for Displaying the Flag in Respect for the Flag. 907R1, we added in some language based on national and/or Iowa code related to that. So that'll come back. All of these will come back.
That takes care of the list. Mr. Sotters, any items of communication?
Well, it was good to see our excellent Bus Meals program, Meals Close to Home, featured by Iowa Public Radio. So that went out statewide. And then our, the excellent effort also by our tech department with the making Chromebooks available to students around the community was featured, again, statewide, or at least here regionally in central Iowa on WHO. And then following up with my, I believe, several meetings ago, I had reported that I will be updating the staff directory. I've begun that work. Right now, save for maybe a few that, that were missed among the giant list of people who have advanced degrees. I believe I've listed most or all of those who have advanced degrees on the website. I'm going to try and find some maybe small symbols or something to help make that clear that they have a, you know, a little scroll or something like that to designate a higher degree. And then as we get everyone who becomes Google certified through the PD that our district is doing with educators, I'll also have a symbol to add to that. And then just continuing the work of updating the staff directory and updating, you know, all the people who are on it, dropping people who are no longer with the district from the directory, things like that. So that's what I've got right now.
Thank you. Coming up, we have secretaries meet and confer on Wednesday, April 15.
Do we still want to have that, if you can even hear me?
I can hear you.
That, April 15th, do we still want to have? I'm, I know that they're willing. I just didn't know, given everything, if we wanted to push that back or are we, are we okay to proceed with that date?
Can you do Google Meet?
We can make it work. Yep, we can proceed with that date then. And you can hear me. I'm really excited. Yay, it worked. Okay. I will push that forward.
Okay. Our next board meeting is on April 20th. And the last four habits will be discussed from the How Not to Be a Terrible Board Member. I would like to thank all of you, central office staff and board directors, for being visible and even Nora being audible at most times. This is new territory for us. And thanks to Amy for coordinating it all. Gosh, no board policies for next meeting, Dr. Shutey?
Might have run.
No new ones?
Well, we can come up with some for everybody.
No, I don't think we need to do that.
I think we'll mention this in your next evaluation.
Yeah. Um, when we get to committee reports, Dr. Shutey has already done the Acer review at the last meeting. Nora's taken care of all the negotiations. Moving on to future agendas. And the question, what have we done this evening to make education better for the students in Marshalltown?
We've addressed how we plan to offer instruction during this time of furlough or COVID.
We, we heard about the new, or the curriculum adoption for social studies and for English Language Arts. Going to go, going to stay on our Chromebook replacement cycle, which is important, as we've, we've seen these last three weeks, how important those Chromebooks are. So I think that's a, that's a good thing to continue. Got a contract for the new racket facility.
We do indeed. That's been a long time coming. Anything else? Well, I was going to bypass the thought for the evening. But I have been doing some cleaning, tossing, throwing, shredding during this last week and came across a quote that I used with my staff during a tough time that we were going through in the building. And I know that each of us have probably had opportunities where we've been frustrated, feel that we've been misunderstood, offended, whatever. But we'll make it through it. And the quote is an anonymous quote that I used with my staff, and I think it's very appropriate now as well, as we continue to move forward and learn as none of us have ever been faced with a situation like this before. The quote goes like this. It says, "I have learned silence from the talkative, tolerance from the intolerant, and kindness from the unkind. I should not be ungrateful to those teachers." We need to move into closed session for expulsion. I would suggest that we take a 10-minute break because you need to come back on the Google site for the expulsion hearing. Thank you all very much. See you in a few minutes.
What, what's the Google site?
Theron gave you the Google site in an email.
Okay, okay. I remember seeing the email. All right, I'll see you then.
Okay. Anybody else need? Are we good? Thank you.
Thank you.